I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring, I have to. Yeah. I'm gonna read with them very soon.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, Karen.
And welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at Rotella Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer, and I want to make a special prayer for our clerk's mother-in-law, Mrs. Swain, who passed away at the ripe old age of ninety-three, so deepest sympathy to you and your family. Commissioner Harvey, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Henry, how are you?
Good. Welcome, President Brown, and Commissioners, to Rotella School. We are very happy to have you. I know we haven't had you here in a couple of years.
A while, yeah.
Yeah, so we're glad that you're back. And we're very excited about two major things that are, that has happened to us this year. The first one is that, and we put the literature on your tables there, we became Magnet School certified. Last year, it really was a year-long project. You have some weekend cruise. It's a hundred and seventy-nine page document that we worked on last year, and we were proud to find out at the beginning of this school year that we got the certification. There was a hundred people, a hundred schools around the country that applied for it, and there was only two in Connecticut that got the certification, and we were one of them.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you. And we got to get this seal, so you'll see this now in my emails. I have it on my emails. We'll be placing it on all of our documents. So with that being said, I would like to have my committee that worked diligently on this all last year to please stand. And I have a couple that are missing. So we have, if you just wanna, Mrs. Parker. Mrs. Deion is not here this evening, but she was on the committee. Mrs. Dane. Ms. Romano. Mrs. Monroe. Mrs. Gravel.
Congratulations.
Also, I would like to recognize Ms. Hakim. She is not with us this year. She's at Reed, but she was a first-grade teacher that we had last year. It was her first year teaching, and she was on our committee and helped us with that, so I want to thank her, too.
Wonderful.
And I'm sorry, my Vice Principal, Mrs. Wallace, which, you know, I really want to acknowledge my whole staff, and I'm very proud of the teachers that came, because it really was a team effort. So I pretty much had one representative from each grade level on the committee and then other staffers. And then they would go back and they would gather the material, so, I mean, it's a hundred and seventy-nine pages. And so, really, it was a team effort with all, so if all my staff will stand up? Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Darren. He met with the Magnet Schools on several occasions. I know it was difficult. He had a very busy schedule, but we did get to meet with him several times, and he helped us. There was one area on there which was area, there was ten standards and then forty-five indicators. And for each one of those, we had to say what we did for the standard and the indicator, and then we had to show evidence. And so Darren helped us to come up with the evidence that we needed for standard eight. So I appreciate that.
Can I just ask, does any Commissioners have any questions on that accreditation? Is this required of us to be, to continue getting funding as a Magnet School in Connecticut?
No.
Or is this over and above?
This is over and above.
Wow, great.
That, yeah, we wanted to participate. This was the first cohort, and out of the hundred, there was fifty?
Fifty-five.
Out of the hundred that applied for it, only fifty-five got the certification.
And two in Connecticut.
And then only two in Connecticut. So, yeah, we were excited.
Wow, what a great thing.
So, the other thing that, oh, and I wanted to mention, we now have a rhythm in news that's gonna be posted on our website, on the district website, and this was created by the students. So if you want to read a little bit about our certification process, too, the students interviewed us, and they did a little publication that we'll be having on our website. So I want to thank Mrs. Gravel for that. That's an extension, students who really are at the top, and when we have our tiered intervention groups, so those that don't need the tiered intervention, she's pulling them and really having them, you know, excel in a different area in writing, so we're very pleased about that. The other thing that we're excited about is, you know, you're hearing all the social-emotional pieces that are, you know, happening throughout, and how are we gonna address it? Well, through this Magnet School certification, we learned about a program called Sanford Harmony, and it was given to us, it was provided to us by Magnet Schools of America, and it was a free program. And so, we're piloting it this year. They gave us the kits. The teachers have been phenomenal, because as you know, their day, there isn't like a minute in the day that's available. So, right now, they are doing what's called a meetup buddy-up, and it's actually getting the students to talk amongst themselves, learn more about themselves. There's these little activity cards that they learn, and your son is in third grade this year.
Third grade, yep.
So what was one of the activities?
One of the activities that they did was, it was like a commonalities game, so the point was to learn, you know, that we are more alike than we are different, and getting to know things about children that you wouldn't normally engage with. So he, you know, he brought that game home. Now, we're playing it together. I said, "I think you know a little bit about me," but he was just really excited that this is something that we're doing on a regular basis, you know, so that kids really get to problem-solve with each other and solve their own conflicts and work together. So it's really been nice so far.
And then there's also another whole teaching component to it. There's lessons, but like, the schedule is very tight for the teachers. So we have a school counselor, Mrs. Dane, and so she's been going into the classrooms and doing the lessons from the program, like, once a week into different grade levels. So we're very excited about that, and we'll keep you posted on how that program unfolds. But going back to the teachers, if ever you want to stop by and see it in action, you know, I keep telling them, too, because it's throughout the day. It's wherever they could fit it in, maybe when they get back from recess, first thing in the morning. So if there's ever a time of day that you would like to stop by, I could find out from them who's doing it at what time, and you're more than welcome. We also have a bulletin board with pictures of the students in action, working with each other and speaking with each other. So if anybody would like to, you know, sit in on that, we welcome you. We will also be having, I think last year we sent out invitations in January for School of Choice Week. We will be doing that again this year, so if you're able to come by and see, it's a, we usually have a culmination on one day, which is usually the Friday, so that, I would probably suggest, would be the best day, because we have some performances and you could tour some of the classrooms. So you'll be getting more information on that, but it was a really fun and eventful week for the students. Do you have any questions on any of the program or? That was very quick, huh?
I guess I would, I had a question in terms of enrollment. How, I mean, how's enrollment to people?
Well, we're always at max, six fifteen. So if we lose a student, then the secretary goes in and calls the next student on, you know, next child, like, in that grade level. We keep the balance between seventy, thirty, and actually, just the other day, we had to look at it, because we were like, who are we taking, and we're perfect. We were at seventy, thirty, exact. So then it's like, okay, so we look at siblings, too. We increased our sibling ratio, because we know it's very difficult for parents. I mean, I would love to have, you know, if it's a sibling they get in, because I know it's very difficult for people, especially because we're a late school, so, you know, they have to pick up another child, and then they're trying to get here, so it is a burden for parents. But right now, so we've increased it to fifty percent. It used to be twenty percent, so, which means, you know, we will look, we have to keep that ratio at the fifty percent, and when we have an opening, we look to see if there's any siblings in that grade level.
Let's hope, let's hope we continue getting funded in the budget, right?
I know, I know.
Any questions for Mrs. Henry? No, thank you very much, and thank you all very much again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to number three, because there's a traffic jam out there, and our, Mrs. Nelson is not, not here. Informational, proposed hiring protocols for teachers.
You okay?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief Academic Officer. Good evening, Talent and Professional Development Director.
So tonight, in your packets, we have a proposed hiring protocol for teachers. We've gone to the Personnel Committee twice to discuss the protocol. We've discussed the protocol with our CHRO Committee for the, for the city, and on Monday, we plan on discussing it with our administrators to get feedback from them as well at our administrators' meeting. As you can see in your packet, there are ten different methods to the, to the, to the protocol, and the big push for this, this new protocol is infusing the Talent Office with human resources so that we, we develop not only a stronger protocol for hiring teachers, but also for constant communication and collaboration between the two departments. Obviously, we want to elicit feedback from as many constituents as possible, and so we've heard from many different outlets, and tonight, we're, we're happy to answer any questions about the protocol. If you'd like me to go over each and every step, I can do that. It usually takes about forty-five minutes in committee, so it's been in your packet, but if you'd like me to cover the gist of it, I'd be happy to do so.
Yes, for the public, yes, just the gist and the critical changes that we're doing.
So I think the, a few of the critical changes are, as positions become available, Human Resources and the Talent Professional Development Office, in lifetime, will be sharing information regarding openings. As those openings become available, the Talent Office will also be recruiting for positions, not only for positions that are open, but the vision for the Talent Office is also so that Johanna and her team will be recruiting for positions that aren't open yet, but may need to be filled in the future. So we have what I would call reserves in the background for, for positions that may, may come open. As they recruit, we've, we've decided that it would be, it would behoove us as a district to be able to allow the Talent Professional Development Supervisor to recommend any candidate in a non-s shortage area right to an interview as, as, as he or she deems fit. In shortage areas where we have difficulty finding anyone in those positions on a consistent basis, we, we're recommending that the Talent Professional Development Supervisor has the right to recommend a hire for Human Resources in real time, specifically at college fairs or recruiting fairs. When we find, for example, that physics teacher, that unicorn that's hard to find, we don't want to wait for another district. It is competitive. Districts do compete, obviously, over, over, over candidates. And so, obviously, we have Johanna not only looking for the best of talent, but also, one, one big part of her mission is finding the best of talent for minority recruitment as well. And so, that's a big change in the, in the process, is her ability to recommend for an interview for non-s shortage areas, and then in shortage areas to recommend for, to hire, right to the Human Resources Department. Their Human Resources will, will do the review of the candidate. They'll do the typical reference check paperwork, fingerprinting, drug screening. They'll, they'll do contract negotiations and provide a verbal employment, and at that time, they would go through the contract process as, as typical as we do now. Another piece that's, that's a little bit different, that we were interested to get feedback on from our administrators, we've heard loud and clear that they're interested to also be able to recommend for interviews. Right now, they are giving candidates for interviews, and so allowing them access to our AppleTrack system and allowing them to be able to look at the candidates for the positions that they have open, and to recommend to Human Resources for a candidate for an interview would be a, a change in the process that I think would be welcomed by most of the administrators in their buildings. And one other piece that we're also interested in getting feedback on from administrators, many of them do this already currently, however, we also know that it may also be a burden, especially during the, the hiring season, where you may be hiring multiple teachers for your building, is having teachers come in to do a, a lesson after the interview. And so that's an additional piece that hasn't been codified in our process, but it's something that we're interested in getting that feedback from administrators, because most other districts do ask teachers to come in for, for, for a lesson before they, we officially offer a contract. Is there anything else, Johanna, that you want to cover that's different? Wow, okay.
All right, well, thank you for, for your hard work. Are there any questions from Commissioners? I mean, I believe that our overall goal is to get the best and brightest, and also to really increase our minority hiring in this district. And we're all committed to that goal, and we look forward to working with the staff to make that happen, so. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes. Could you just outline again what the implementation schedule is for this process?
Sure, so tonight, we've gone to Personnel twice. We've gone to CHRL. Tonight, we're addressing the workshop. After this, our plan is to go to the administrators on Monday, elicit feedback from them, and then we believe that the, at that point, it would be a collaboration between Talent Office, the Chief Academic Office, and Human Resources with the superintendent or the person in charge of all the departments to be able to start the ball rolling in terms of implementation. We'd like to see this as early as next week as, if possible.
All right, so, so, through the chair. So when you say feedback from the administrators, does that mean that there is an opening for change there in the process, or?
Well, I would like to, I would like to think if, if they're gonna take the time to give us feedback, we'll listen to it. We'll, we'll see how prevalent it is in terms of, I would rec, I'm anticipating the feedback will be positive in terms of AppleTrack access and the ability to have a candidate that they see that deems fit for their, their school to have them come to the interview. And I'll, I'll be more interested to see about the, the lesson and how burdensome that may or may not be. There may be a slight alteration on that. I can anticipate possibly something there, but I think overall, it will be, it will be welcomed. But yes, there, there could be a slight change to the process, which we'll update the board if there is a change.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Questions from Mrs. Hayes? Not open. When you first came on last year, there were interviews that you were doing, I would presume, from when you first came on until present?
What do you mean, there were interviews?
In other words, when you were handling what you do as your job. Were you a part of the recruitment process and the interview process?
Not necessarily. I took the lead on the will-be hire. Dr. La asked me to do that when I came on, but right now, I'm currently not a part of the interview process.
Okay. So then, my question would be then, with this new system, how would your, what would your job change to? How would you do that differently than you already do? What, what, what does this empower you to do?
Well, everything about it is different than what I already do, because I'm currently not a part of the process. So, the scheduling of the interviews, so that basically to know who's being interviewed, how are we? I, I think probably the most important part for me was, in this role, I've gotten lots of calls from people who just never got a response, never heard back, so to be able to say that, you know, this is how we selected the candidates for interview. This is, you know, who interviewed, this, these are the positions that have been filled. But even more importantly, I think, when people are not selected for a position, to open up that line of communication and have that person in mind in case something else opens up. You know, to, I don't want people to walk away feeling frustrated that they weren't selected, because maybe it just wasn't a good fit for that position, but to be able to say, you know, as other things open up, to reach out directly to people and say, "I encourage you to reapply for this, this job," or to, you know, "There's something else at another school that might be a better fit," or whatever. Right now, I have no place in that process, so that's how I anticipate it being different.
So then you would, you would watch all this take place, and you would make note of who we'd like to bring back again for another interview?
Yes. Well, actually, one of the things is, as, obviously, I couldn't go to every interview, like, especially in the summer if we're hiring dozens of teachers, but to have the opportunity to sit in on an interview as a non-scoring member of the committee, just to see who's coming before us, to kind of get some background on people so that I begin to know who our applicant pool is and reach back out to people.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now for, also, Mr. Schwartz. On number six on the, on the sheet, it talks about the non-scoring member, and the non-scoring member is who? Just so you can speak it out for the, for the record.
I can answer that. It's generally a school governance council member or a parent of, of the school that has the, the opening.
Okay, so the school governance council member can sit in, but they're non-scoring?
Correct.
Is there anyone else present who's non-scoring?
No. For teachers? For teachers, usually not board members. That would be for the administrators.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you know this, the, and if a board member sat in there as an observer, as a non-scoring observer for a teacher.
Correct, and board members don't usually sit in.
Yeah, if they did, though.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to lots of good hires. Is Mrs. Nelson here yet? Okay. Committee on Policy, request approval of the following revised and/or new policies.
Darren and Melissa. Darren and Melissa are gonna take a one.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just so you're all aware, Wendy could not be here this evening. Her father-in-law has passed away, and she had to, she had to support her husband.
Could you talk louder into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, yeah. And just tell us who you are for the record.
Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education.
Wendy couldn't be here. Her father-in-law passed tonight.
So, the Disciplined Student Conduct Policy, I know she had reviewed it in the committee. The 5-1-1-4-Q is being removed from the policy. It is not, policy is more procedure and protocol for, for the district, so it doesn't belong in that area. It's, I don't know if you all have it in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, we have the original, but we also have the updated protocols from Wendy,
Yep.
which are rewritten to align with the state's coding.
The ED, yes.
Yeah.
There was a que, there was also the 5-1-3-2-D. They're removing the adherence to the Board of Ed Dress Code policy from July 2005.
Correct.
That's also in the updated protocols and procedures.
Correct. And the other major change is that dress code violations no longer will be anything more than an in-school suspension.
Correct.
At that point, if they go beyond that, they would fall apparently under another category, but no, no one will be out-of-school suspended for a dress code policy violation.
That's correct.
So that was the other major change.
Great. Are there any other changes? Do we still have the tiered interventions and all that? We do. Those were also updated. The rules, violations, and disruptive behaviors for Level One, disruptive and serious behaviors for Level Two. Level Three is now safety concerns, and Level Four is major offenses. And some of the updates included the restorative justice practices that have been intertwined in the interventions as well. I know. I would be interested at some point to know how our, the new procedure, where we're referring people to the Juvenile Review Board instead of arrests, how that's going, you know, as we move forward, because I think that, that was really a step in the right direction, trying to find out why these kids are acting this way instead of arresting them. So I'm hoping we're really focusing on that kind of policy, so I'd be interested in the data at some point. Okay, thanks. Absolutely. Any other questions on the Disciplined Student Conduct Policy? Okay. Commissioner Thierio.
Through the chair, Commissioner Sweeney. Is it my understanding that no student will be suspended because of violation of the dress code? Is that the new policy?
That's correct.
So?
No out-of-school suspension.
No out-of-school.
Yes.
So they can have an in-school suspension?
Correct.
But never an out-of-school suspension? That was different than what we had before, right?
It is, correct.
So what if they go to in-school suspension and they're still not compliant? What's the next step after that?
As in comply with the dress code or comply with other items?
Dress code. What if they, what if they are belligerent and they say, "Listen, I wore this hoodie, and I'm gonna wear the hoodie to in-house suspension every day that I'm in in-house suspension." What do we, where do we go next? Do we say, "Please, take the hoodie off?" Pretty please?
We do do those things.
Yeah, I know that. And I don't think we should be doing those things myself, but that's my opinion.
So one of the things that is built into here is an increased level of support for students. Why are they wearing that hoodie? What is going on with that child that they're causing them to be so belligerent? Generally, children have at least one or two adults in the buildings that they will speak to and talk to and can make a, make a, make a connection with. So we do have those conversations with the children, and that has, has been, it happens on occasion that we do have one or two students that really are against the dress code and they just do not want to be in it, but we do, through our social workers and through our school counselors, it's more at the high school level, and through our SROs, or sometimes that person to support that student and just doing what they need to do to get through their school day appropriately.
And I also think that if you, if, if that student is that belligerent, did you think the inside suspension would change the behavior? Or the outside suspension would actually change the behavior, is what Melissa's getting at? It's about changing the behavior of why they're belligerent. So the outside suspension historically doesn't change behavior if someone is that adamant about something, historically.
You mentioned a lot of people, a lot of resources, but I didn't hear you mention the parents. You know, hopefully, we would get the parents involved in this, you know?
The parents are, are generally called right away when the children are out of dress code for them to either bring in clothes or for them to say, "Yes, they have clothes. They just changed when they got to school today." So parents are brought in right away. It's the first, one of the first things they do besides talk to the, besides talk to the, they talk to the children first, and if the children are saying, "I don't have clothes," call home. Mom will, either mom, dad, guardian will say any number of things, say, "I will bring clothes. I don't, I can't bring clothes because I don't have transportation. My child came, came to school with their dress code clothes and have changed since then." And many of, I would say, most of the schools have dress code collars in their closets to provide to children on a, on a temporary basis if needed, if they, if they can't get them clothes that day.
So let me get this straight. So at some point in time, whether it be the second or third- So at some point in time, whether it be the second or third warning, somewhere around there, we would give them an in-house suspension?
I, I think at most times, they try to have the children change no matter what. I don't think in-school suspension is, "You came into dress code, three, out of dress code, three times in a row, you're going to in-school suspension." I, I still feel like the vice principals and those that are talking to the children try to get them to get into dress code and to go to class.
Yeah. The objective is to get them into class.
Right. It's not to get them into in-school.
Into the class where learning takes place and so they don't become belligerent and they adhere to the policy.
Right.
Well, in effect, we pretty much watered down that policy a great deal so students would have the option and the alternative to learning other than be, being belligerent and continue with the non-conforming dress code.
Right.
So let's see how this works. You know, I'm, I'm one to spare the rod and spoil the child, but not everybody is like that, you know? I would say to the kid, you know, "Take the sweatshirt off. Put the," you know, years ago, and I hate to be redundant, we had to wear a shirt and tie in, in school. We all did pretty well and there was certain dress code with regard to girls in the school, but that's old school. But I mean, I fear that we have watered down the policy so much that I, I really hope that it's still going to be effective, but only time will tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Just to take a step back to the current policy, right now, is it four or five kind of tiers from, hey, why don't you get in a uniform to out-of-school suspension?
It's four.
Is it four?
I think it's four.
It's four. And it was pretty clear-cut, and I think the idea of that policy was to take the gray area out of the equation to make it easier for teachers and administrators. Say, "All right, this is time number three, Johnny, so clearly according to policy, you have whatever it is." Is there concern that with this new policy, which is a little more open-ended, that the control and the lack of gray area that we're trying to create with policy currently is kind of being taken away? And the concern that the uniformity of discipline, whatever it may turn out to be, will be lost where teacher A says, "Well, I know this is your third time and I may, should do this, but since it's not codified, I'm going to give you another chance, Johnny," where the teacher next door, he says, "No, I'm tired of it now. You're, you're going in." Is there any concerns that, A, it's making, we're making it harder on the teachers and administrators, or two, within the buildings themselves, there's going to be a lack of, what are we supposed to do with this kid?
So as a, I was a teacher at Willby for a number of years and dress code was always a concern. I would have kids in my class that would, they'd get there, they'd get into dress code. We'd, we'd go on our day, we'd do our instruction, and there would be some teachers that would let it go regardless, and then there would be some teachers that wouldn't let them through the door. So it, it, it's very difficult to know exactly what's going to happen. However, I do know that our suspension rates for children who are in dress code have been very high historically. And, and that is a concern that we're, we're out-of-school suspending children who are out of dress code for 10s, 11s, 12s, or more days a year, and then they're not in their classrooms being instructed. I think that this gives the vice principal or whoever's doing the discipline leeway in the sense that they can send them to in-school suspension if the student is becoming so disruptive to the learning process, and I'm not just talking about dress code. If there, if it becomes a, a bigger issue, then that, that doesn't, that's not covered under dress code. That's covered elsewhere. If they're swearing or becoming a safety concern in the building. So those things are covered in other places. But I, I do know that, that the major concern, and I've sat in Discipline Committee for many years, was that the dress code, the way it's working at the high school is, is not successful and we're suspending children a lot. So I do, I do have that concern that, you know, it's, it's going to be a little bit more difficult in the sense that it's not black and white, but I think we need to be able to give our, our principals the ability to make those professional judgment on, on kids, on whether or not, you know, they can go back to class. Can we find them that, that shirt to go, to go to their English class or to their math class? So I feel as though it, it will be easier in some ways and, and more difficult than others, and I think in three to six months, we're going to see that our suspension rates are down. And we'll have to meet with the principals and, and really determine if, if it's working for them.
Well, and if I make, you know, by matter of policy, the suspension rates will be down because we can't suspend them. So of course that will happen.
Out-of-school, yes, yeah.
So I, I guess we're tinkering with the end. I think it's the means I'm trying to, to make sure that we've gotten correct because, you know, the example John gave where the kid's becoming belligerent, I agree. He's now falling out of, you know, dress code problems and maybe there are other things that, you know, an administrator teacher would have to do to deal with that, and that still may end up in an out-of-school suspension that maybe started as a dress code violation but took a wrong turn somewhere along the way.
Right.
It, you know, and while I agree completely with Darren that sending any kid out of school doesn't help them academically, doesn't. But at the same time, at what point do you allow a serial offender to take up five, six, seven minutes every class, getting bounced out for a dress code? You know, there's 20, 22, 25 other kids in that classroom who are losing an educational opportunity every day because of that one kid. So while I, I get that we got to do all we can to make sure that the kid who can't for some reason get in dress code gets all the supports he can get and make sure that we can turn him around, at the same time, I don't want to lose sight of the other kids in that class who every day, as soon as Johnny goes off on his thing, they sit there, they roll their eyes, the teacher's got to deal with it, someone's got to come fix the problem, and they're losing their time. You know, I, I want to make sure that this policy is not only fair to the kid getting in trouble, but to all the peers as well.
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't really a question, it was more of a filibuster, but I think you got my point.
I do.
Thank you, Madam President.
Commissioner Harvey and then Commissioner Thierio.
Yes, I, I'm not directing this to you, I'm just making just a general statement. And as, you know, I'm, I'm listening to the words, the serial offender, the rambunctious student, and I recall that we, as a board, are supposed to look at the dress code for the very reason that you mentioned, that there is a very high rate of suspensions, or was, or is, due to the dress code. Now, I thought we were supposed to look at that. And again, I'm not, I'm not addressing, I'm just, I'm just saying this, this is, I'm kind of directing this to the, to the board, because I think back to the day of, we had in one day, suspension of 160, 154 kids for the dress code. And we had to rescind that. So I thought that after that occurred, that we were going to look at the dress code. We need our kids, and I don't believe that it's all belligerent. When, when I was informed at my church by the school, by the, one of the students who attends the school, that this amount of kids were suspended, they said 200, they knew pretty much what, what they're supposed to do in terms of dress code. In fact, as soon as that asked me the question, told me this, informed me of this, I asked, "Were you involved in this?" And he said, "No, I, I'm dressing the way we're supposed to dress." But I thought that this board was supposed to look at that, this, we were supposed to look at the dress code policy, revisit it because of the fact that we are always, because of the high suspension rate, and the suspension rate just happens to be very high among the minority students. So when I listen to the words that are being used, serial offender, and, you know, I think of the justice system and what we use in that regard. So I think we need to look at, even though we're looking, we're looking at the policy, and again, I'm not, it's not you, Darren and Melissa, but I'm throwing this out to the board. And we sometimes forget, you know, we go through these, these issues and we forget that we're supposed to come back and revisit and look and see how this is affecting our kids. Our kids need to be in the classroom. And I'm all for discipline, but when, for example, if a kid is out of, out of school suspension, what do we do about homework? We don't have anything in the policy that addresses, are we going to give, are we going to make sure the child is, is supplied with homework? Nothing at all in our discipline policy. So I'm just throwing that out, that I thought that we were supposed to review this whole thing about discipline, particularly as it relates to the dress code. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Thierio.
Yeah, at the expense of semantics, maybe serial offender was the wrong word.
It means someone who fends over and over again.
Yeah, maybe, maybe chronic, maybe chronic would have been a kinder word.
It's the same meaning.
Serial kind of gives us the creeps.
It means it's over and over and over.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's okay. I agree with Commissioner Harvey on that one. But with regard to belligerent, the word I used, would it be kinder to say unruly? Would it be kinder to say disruptive? Yeah, but kind of means the same thing. When we look at the number of students that were suspended, regardless of whether they were a minority or a non-minority, of those were the students that broke the rule. In our school system, we have 80% minority. So we could expect theoretically, 80% of those kids in violation of the dress code might be 80%, might be less. So I want to just debunk that a bit. Who are the kids that are breaking the rules? Who are the kids that are out of dress code? Those are the kids, we're not going around looking for them, they're walking the hallways in violation of the dress code. So now we have a new policy, and at the expense of calling it coddling, because quite honestly, that's what I think it is, we're coddling them. We're not saying to them, after they have chronically violated the rules, time after time, five times, we're going to give you an in-house suspension. And then if you're disruptive in the in-house suspension because you've been unruly, that creates another situation that could result in an out-of-school suspension. I do agree with Commissioner Harvey and the other board members on this committee. It is a tremendous disservice to our kids to suspend them at any time out of school. But, you know, every once in a while, you have to draw a line in the sand and say, "When you cross over the line, you've gone too far. So we're not going to do that. You know, we're going to give them five chances, we're going to give them 10 chances or 20 chances." You know how I feel when I said, "Take off that hat," not, "We're going to negotiate for three hours for you to take off the hat." No student should be suspended for failing to remove the hat. You know why? Because they should take the hat off. That's why. One time, not three times, not five times, take your hat off. Please. Pretty please. We're going to have a conference for three hours to take your hat off. I don't know where it stops. I, I am, I am extremely concerned over the, you know, we said we had a lot of suspensions over violation of the dress code. I'm going to assume that we're going to have a tremendous influx into the in-house. Instead of out-of-school suspension, we're going to have an influx into the in-house. And that's going to crowd up our in-house suspension for kids that have violated other rules that need to be dealt with. High on suspensions, yeah, I like to see no suspensions. I like to see all these kids behave. If we can only put an old head on a young body for two minutes, it would be over. You know, they would know how important education is. But I do sympathize with the, with the plight of the student, but I do sympathize, as Commissioner Van Stone said, with the plight of the other students. And I, quite honestly, in my own opinion, I think we've watered this down to the point that it's going to be ineffective. My opinion only. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Brown. I, I just want to thank Commissioner Sweeney and the Policy Committee folks, and I, I tend to lean on the side of Commissioner Harvey in reference to why we were, we were here in updating this policy in the first place. I think we tend to forget what happened last year. I think we all got calls. I know I got tons of calls for kids being suspended on one day, over 100-plus kids, which was unheard of and quite disturbing. I will say this, too. We all know that a kid is going to learn if he's in school. Kids don't learn when they're home and when they're out of school. So if it causes an influx in the in-house suspension, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. And I'm okay with this new updated policy. And we all should be. Because at the end of the day, it's not, you know, wearing a hat or a sweater because they're cold, or the colored shirt that they, maybe their clothes that from school was dirty and, you know, there's so many issues that our kids deal with, and we're talking about dress code policy and that they should be suspended out of school. Are you kidding me? These kids come from poverty and have maybe one shirt, two shirt, and we're going to suspend them and, and not deal with the behavioral issue because we'd rather send them out of school. That's the wrong mindset, and I think that this policy helps change the direction we need to go and that we should go. And so again, I thank Commissioner Sweeney, the Policy Committee folks, and, and Commissioner Harvey for pushing this way back, and, and this is something I think that's long overdue. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Wendy Owen, who's not here, because I, I have sat in on many school climate committees and was alarmed, very alarmed, by pages and pages of people suspended for the dress code. And I, I really urged the committee to look at the discipline and related to the dress code. And for the record, if a policy is not promoting student achievement and student well-being, then we really have to review it. And I think we would do, and I agree with Commissioner Harvey. We are trying to really keep kids in school and develop relationships. This is not about a power struggle between a teacher and, and a kid. This is about developing relationships and building those relationships to promote school climate and, and to really address the achievement gap. We have an equity issue in this urban district, a real equity. This, this has a lot to do with the inequality that our kids face in their personal life and quite, quite honestly, with the funding system in our school district. So I think we have to look at it with a macro lens, a compassionate lens, and I really think, I, I would like to look at the school dress policy and revisit it. Many school districts don't have a dress code. If a kid comes to school, I quite, I, I don't care if they show up in pajamas, quite frankly. If they're in school to learn, then, then they should be treated with respect. I mean, I think we're at a point now, we really have to look at that policy and if it's really getting to the core of what we want. Is it promoting a safe school? Is it promoting relationships in the school? Or is it a point of contention all the time? I was at a school last year, just happened to be there, the kids were getting off the bus, all I heard the principal saying was, "Out of uniform, get over there." Is that a way to greet a child?
No.
No. That has to stop. So I think this is an attempt to say to all of the school staff and all of us that we have to get to know these kids and these kids have to feel welcome in our schools. I feel very passionate about that. And I think we should look at the policy, and if it's not working, if it's causing our schools to be discontent, then we really have to look at it. So that's my, my, my opinion on the subject. Commissioner Sweeney.
Well, I disagree that the dress code is the crux of the problem, because I don't believe it is. I don't believe that students should be out-of-school suspended for dress code policy, because quite frankly, the easiest way to get yourself a day off from school is to because quite frankly, the easiest way to get yourself a day off from school is to show up out of dress code. So I think this is a good step in the right direction, capping that at in-school suspension. But like anything else, I gotta say that I think we have to work with our administrators and our teachers to make sure that they understand these new levels, that they understand that if a student is out of dress code two times, three times, that becomes something else that's now insubordination, and now we look at the root cause of, of what's causing the insubordination. I think that being out of dress code, um, is a signal of something other than, "I don't want to dr- wear a dress code." And we will never get there if the focus is on getting the child out of school because they're out of, out of dress code. So I think this is a really good step in the right direction. I would like to give this some time and see where it goes and see how our numbers look after that. But I also want to make sure that we're tracking what happens after that second or third time out of dress code, where does that go? If it goes to insubordination, how do we address that? And, and what are the results of that? Are we getting to the root of the problem? And, and are we seeing a drop overall in out-of-school suspension, which includes insubordination? So I would like to see where this goes. But I, I thank Wendy for all the work that she did. Um, we're in good stead here, we're in alignment with the state now, so that our numbers will now line up, what goes to state will really be reflected in our numbers that come back to us. So this was a lot of work. I know that the Discipline Committee did a lot of work with this, um, and I thank them for all their effort.
Okay, next is the revised administration of medication policy.
I just have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Stengel, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, point out, a reminder that what brought all this seemingly, seemingly to a head was the incident that a hundred and twenty-five, or a hundred and whatever number was, we seem to be hanging our hat on that, were suspended. And, and, and we have to point out and remember that they were suspended not because of the dress code policy, they were suspended in the implementation, there was an error in the implementation of that policy. So we can't just keep saying, "You see what happened, a hundred and fifty kids," or whatever, because that is not the exact way it planned out.
That's true, yep.
So we, we have to, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, that was a good clarification. Okay, C, revised administration of medication policy?
Yeah, I've got that one.
Got that one?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I had contact from, and Corporation Council had contact from, um, someone, of one of the, um, school news nursing supervisors about a, um, about two passages in our administration of medications policy, which was creating a barrier at the beginning of the year, getting students their medications. They asked us to remove it. In researching it, you will see the letter from, um, the email from Lois regarding this, that it actually was a Board of Health that put two, two sections in about twenty years ago. They have agreed that they are no longer relevant nor needed, um, so we'll be removing them from the policy.
Thank you. Any questions? So it, it sounds like we're in compliance with the state now.
Correct. The, the policy, other than those two, and, two sections was in compliance, those two sections did not make it out of compliance, they were something added by our health department a number of years ago, just not, no, no longer necessary.
Okay, and D, new directory information policy?
Uh, this policy had come before the committee, um, previously, uh, the committee had asked for a, um, opinion from Corporation Council as to, um, some of the legal ramifications of the policy and was it, you know, written correctly to, um, comply with law. Uh, the response from Corporation Council is also in your packet, um, that Chief, uh, Corporation Council found that the, um, the policy was in, in line with state and, uh, federal regulations and also did not violate anything in city charter, so she is completely comfortable with it going forward.
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you to the hard work at the Policy Committee. Number five, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, and Mr., I'm sorry, okay, Adele's here? Okay, well, moved, I said, uh, we asked for an update on the water testing?
Yes.
And then we'll go to number two, Adele.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioners, good evening. Just for a little bit of history, you know, last year, we started testing the water in a few of our schools and made a decision to test the water in all of our schools. We finished at the end of the school year, all the tests were fine except for two, Wendell Cross and Walsh. The test Wendell Cross about a week and a half ago came back fine, it passed, so Wendell Cross is fine, there was still an issue with testing at Walsh. Uh, I'm happy to tell you that the test from Walsh came back right before I left downtown to come out here for the meeting. The standard, the EPA action standard is point zero-two, point zero-two. And what I'd like to do, there were six, six samples or seven samples taken, I'd like to read you the, uh, results. Test number one, point zero-zero-eight-nine, that's milligrams per liter, point zero-zero-nine-nine, point zero-one-zero, point zero-one-one, point zero-zero-nine-four, point zero-zero-seven-nine. These were the flush tests, the water is safe at Walsh. However, there was a, I made a decision Tuesday, we immediately removed the bubbler that was tested. There's concern in the community over the safety of the water, and I wanted it to end. So that bubbler is out, it is not going back in service. I had some discussions with Mr. Sullivan before I left about options we have. The most expensive option and the most disruptive option is to dig up the pipe from the inside of the building out to the street and replace it. We won't do that. What we may do are some filtering options that we have. That's something we'll discuss, and that will be a project probably for the summer. But at this point, there is additional water being provided by the Food Service Department, so water is available, the bubbler is in service. This one is out of service, and we'll figure out some reason as to why it failed, but right now, according to the Department of Public Health in the state of Connecticut, the water is certified as safe.
Great, thank you for that update.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Brinker, thank you, that is good news. Um, that being said, I don't think, we can just quickly turn the page. So what is, uh, what are the plans to, one, I know we're gonna take a look at that bubbler and see if that may have been the root cause, we're gonna set it up to a different water source and see if we had some, uh, abnormal tests there. And then, I guess especially for Walsh and Gil Martin, we're the last two, we're hanging around, what are we gonna do to continue random testing, at what level, where we're gonna do it, and, and what time period? So, so again, so the public knows that not only are we happy with tonight's result, we're gonna keep an eye on everything going forward to make sure everything stays copacetic.
We are. We started discussions about a month ago, Commissioner, with the two other groups in the city that we work with, Department of Public Health and the Water Department, as to what frequency of testing would be appropriate. It's not, we, we haven't come to a decision, do we do it every year? All the schools, do we do a third of the schools every year? We don't know yet. Do we do the newer schools, less frequent than the older schools, where there's more, where there's more opportunity for that to happen? In this building, this was built after the standards were changed with some of the piping, some of the older schools are much older, so there's more possibility. But that's something that I'd like your input and the input of the experts in the Water Department and the Health Department also, and then we'll come to, as a group, a decision.
And I think that means, I was talking about in the very short term, over the next three months, are we gonna continue to keep an eye on those two schools at least specifically, just to make sure that while today's results are positive, something doesn't happen three weeks from now?
Okay, thank you, that's, that's a good question also. Not that all your questions aren't good, but I do appreciate that one. What we started when the first test came back over the actionable level was to follow the guidelines of the federal EPA and the state EPA, and that's to flush the water. They recommended two minutes, if there's six hours of non-use of water, then you flush for two minutes. We did it five minutes, every day. We're gonna continue that, both in Cross and in Walsh. So the water will be run for five minutes in the morning prior to use by the public. That will ensure that these results are what the people are drinking. Testing of those, we may go back in six months, I'll talk to the, the other two department heads and get their input.
In, for this, for the state guidelines, do they generally consider one clean test, one clean test good enough? Do they want a differential, just to make sure that the test went right? Do they have any other specs that they require or at lea-, or maybe not require, but encourage to say, "Okay, we're, we're happy, whatever, uh, results you got are now under level, it's our recommendation, you do a second one just to double-check it, or do another one in a couple of weeks." Are there any state guidelines or, or anything that we can look to, to help guide the process?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, and then Commissioner Thierio.
Thank you. Bob, I want to thank you for, you, you receive, I wasn't frantic, but, um, just, you know, responding to what I was hearing in the community, um, on their concerns regarding Wendell Cross and Walsh. And that was prompted, the Walsh, um, call, calls that I was receiving was prompted by the paper, the newspaper article that appeared, stating that there would be a retesting and all of that. So, just to review, because the reporter was not here when you were reviewing, he's here now, um, that, would you just repeat what you, you told us so that he would, he will get that?
Yes, I will, and I'll also provide him with this hard copy of the test results that I brought with me.
Thank you.
You all receive a soft copy as soon as I go back to my computer, so you'll have these with you. Uh, in addition to the parents at Walsh, we, I had calls today from the parent at Carrington concerned about the water, and, and also parent at Bunker Hill, they had the test results from the state, but they were misreading the results, because it showed lead, they thought that was a violation, they didn't know that there was a standard. But I'll be glad to sit with, uh, the reporter and provide him with these results as soon as we're done.
Very good. And it just, just, um, that we, it's, it's very important, particularly, I fully understand, as well as I'm sure all commissioners understand, uh, the importance of the concern with lead. We know how that affects our children. And, you know, it just seemed, if, you know, just in hindsight, that, uh, not your fault, but that the state, it just took so long to get their test results back and, and, you know, it just seemed as if due to, you know, the, you know, dealing with the kids and making sure that they're safe, that those results would come back a little bit quicker. So, so, you know, that kind of added to, you know, the concern out there in the community.
I can understand that.
Yes.
I can only state that the Department of Public Health at the state has had reductions in staff.
Oh.
And they test for the entire state, for all different types of units, it's not just schools that they test for.
Right.
Houses, industry, hospitals, I'm not making excuses for them, but in this case, we got them back quickly because Richard Lee called and asked for a favor.
Okay, that's good. And so, just want to conclude by saying that, um, we, you know, there's information that some people are putting out there that's incorrect, so, you know, it's important that you, not only, you know, I think it's very timely that we received this report, but that the correct information is out there and that we did what we should do, with the exception of, you know, the timeliness of receiving the results of the report, um, that we are looking out for our kids and we're looking out for the safety of our kids. And I think it's a good idea to, um, schedule, although we did this, didn't we do this proactively? Did we start testing?
Yes, Commissioner.
We were proactive with this, okay?
It was voluntary, there was no requirement that we do it.
No, no requirement, okay. So I think we should continue that, um, you know, set up a schedule to, to test the water, not only at Walsh School, but also in all the schools, and, um, just to keep that on a regular basis, routine basis, so that, um, you know, puts the parents' mind at ease. But I really appreciate all that you, you did in regarding to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thierio, and then Commissioner Van Stone.
I think it's quite amazing that we don't have a bigger problem than we have, uh, and we don't have any problem right now. Because our schools are, some of them are over a hundred years old, some of them are a hundred and twenty-five, almost a hundred and thirty years old. Many of them were built with lead pipe, and, uh, it's my understanding, from the limited discussion that I got regarding the lead pipe, I would be very concerned, such as a school like Hopeville, that had a lot of lead pipe running the water through it. But it's not, it's my understanding that it's not necessarily the lead pipe, but more the, the, the joints and the solder.
It's the solder, Commissioner.
And the welding and so forth, that might be breaking down at some point into the water, causing periodic problems. But at least we're on top of it, we're gonna do filtering, we're gonna eliminate the source of any problem. We've been very, very proactive, thanks to you and your staff, the head of the school maintenance department, um, and all of those supervisors. Uh, we had a great discussion the other night regarding the water, we went into this problem in depth and a great deal of depth. And, uh, compliments to all the people that have been involved, especially you, Mr. Brinker, in being proactive and being really, really on top of this for the health and safety of the kids. I do think it would behoove us to get the results back faster. Uh, and just as a footnote to this, uh, I'd like to see our sprinkler systems also, um, reviewed. I know they're reviewed once a year, uh, I want to make sure they are reviewed again. We had a little problem previous where a report was, were questionable, let's put it that way. And that had been resolved, so maybe in the future, we can look at that, too, and, um, constantly monitor the water. Uh, I can assure the public with the meeting that we had with Mr. Carver, I think it was, from
Yes, it was.
From the Water Department, uh, I was extremely impressed with the detail and the thoroughness that he gave us in his report, pointing out that the water in the city of Waterbury is tested periodically at all different locations, uh, not only just coming out of the reservoirs at very different locations every single day, to assure that our water is healthy and safe. So with Mr. Carver at the helm and you monitoring our system, I don't think we should have too much to worry about in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I just would like to state for the record that the Waterbury water is safe because of the actions that Don Carver and his predecessors have taken to add remediation into the water supply, so that it does protect the corrosion in the pipes. That's what is making those old pipes and the old joints, as you referenced with the solder, safe. They add the additive to the water, makes, makes the pipe safe, but thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, to you. Again, I also would like to thank you, Mr. Brinker, because I did raise some concerns, mainly about infrastructure. I wasn't necessarily worried about, one, as you call it, bubbler, I call it water fountain.
I call it water fountain, I work with people from Massachusetts, they call it bubbler, I apologize. I've adopted their language.
I'm a Yankee fan, I don't do anything Massachusetts.
So do I, I agree.
So I do appreciate it.
At least the Yankees are playing baseball now, and the other team isn't, that's why.
I, um...
You're fired.
Well, there's an opening in Boston I can look up. But I still do have a concern, though, with the infrastructure. So, uh, continuous testing is important.
Yes.
Uh, these numbers are certainly good, uh, I think it should definitely raise the confidence level, so I do appreciate it. Um, I will certainly postpone my request for an outside company to take a look at these, but certainly in the future, if we see any sort of fluctuation, uh, I don't think we should take that option off the table.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I appreciate this, the numbers are good, definitely has raised my confidence level, so thank you for the work you did on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brinker. Next on the agenda is, um, Mrs. Nelson. This is the request approval of the submission of the 2017-19 Title III Grant Application. Good evening, how's that traffic?
Good evening. I'm asking permission to submit the application for our 2017, 2019 Title III grant and also the immigrant sub-grant.
Okay, how much money do we get from that grant? I forget.
Um, for For Title III, we were allotted $352,530, which is a decrease of about $20,000 from last year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. I it's just to to tidy it up a little bit. We kind of heard by accident the other day with Title I funding, if we had not allowed children to come to our schools that were not trained, toilet trained, we might have been in violation of some things. Are we sure we meet all the requirements of this grant? And we're not going to look tomorrow and say, oh, we better fix something?
We submit yearly annual grant evaluations to the state. And we also, as part of the application, we describe our programming, and it's approved by the state.
So we're pretty confident that.
Very confident, yes.
Something way down in the weeds, we're we're okay, and we won't find out later we're in violation?
No, we work very closely with the state. And we also have four yearly meetings where we meet with the state representatives and the consultants. So that way, we make sure that we're always in compliance and we have all the information up to date.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next is use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests, number eight superintendent's notification to the board. We do not have an executive session. And could I have a motion to adjourn?
May I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to have just a two-minute recess and regroup for our special meeting. Okay.
No, no, here, take this.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education at Rotella Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Pray for all our loved ones. Vice President Rodriguez, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Vice President Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Therry?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present.
Thank you. Is there anyone? No, okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening on the item? Thank you. All right. Commissioner Stango.
Item number 1.1, request approval of the appointment of a temporary assistant deputy superintendent of schools. Ladies and gentlemen, the committee on school personnel recommends approval of the appointment of Robert Henry as the temporary assistant deputy superintendent of schools pending contract negotiations. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. To you. I do appreciate the fact that we were able to have a non-quorum meeting, get get to meet the gentleman who's going to bridge our gap. I certainly did have some some reservations on some of his past, but overall, his resume spoke volumes on the credibility that he's had between New York City, someone in Hartford, and Bridgeport. And more importantly, that he he felt, I don't know if he said the word obligation, but at least something in his heart to go back to his home country and also help with education. My preference would have been, and although the timeframe was very difficult for us to try to bridge this gap, certainly would have been to have more than one person we could have spoken to. But that didn't quite work out. One of my concerns is going forward is we haven't really heard much about where we are or are not with the search and the progress of the search that we're going to need to take for a replacement superintendent permanently. At least, I'll speak for myself, I actually have not heard anything about where we're at with either contracting someone to do that search or any folks that they may or may not have at least taken some sort of look at. I think what some of the things that concern me with our candidate is I really am a little bit concerned about our vetting process. When we did meet with him, some of the things we did find out later were not brought to our attention. And not until we made some requests did those things come to light. Now, they were fully explained to us. We understood them. But I think I would have had a preference to hear about them prior to asking questions about some of the things that are actually on this gentleman's resume. My other concern is when we when we wrote this or edited the job description for where we're going to place him until February, we did remove a very key element, which was a requirement for doctrine. I'm just concerned that when we post or look for whoever that may be, an interim superintendent come February, are we going to relieve that requirement as well? Because right now, the superintendent's job does require. So the interim, I'm not sure how we're going to write that up come February, but it's not far away. Are we going to relieve that requirement as well? So I do have some trepidations with where we're at. For some good reasons, some not so good reasons, we didn't have a lot of time to really put together multiple candidates. But that did concern me. I I thought a little more time spent, maybe reacting like the superintendent was on vacation, would have given us a couple few more weeks to at least look at a few other candidates. So we are where we are. We certainly needed someone to guide the ship. So I'm not being critical of that. But a few more candidates and a little better vetting process, I think would have done as done as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Therry.
Yeah, I too would have liked to see some more candidates. I too, it's my understanding, it may have been a list from the state cave or the other organization of superintendents. There might have been as many as 12 people on that list that we could have looked at. However, it was decided that this candidate was the best one. That being said, I too am impressed with his credentials and his his passion and his sincerity and his demeanor. I think he's really kind of a perfect fit for us. He knows he has to maintain the status quo, and he's not going to be doing anything tremendously out of the ordinary. And our new superintendent is going to have to do things that are extraordinary in terms of test scores, teaching, instruction, discipline, et cetera. I am concerned because we are currently paying our superintendent, while she is, I don't want to say on leave, while she is fulfilling her obligation to the city, we are paying her in excess of $1,000 a day. I'm basing that on the basis of 220 days, 220,000. And I think she also gets an annuity for, is it 25,000? Does anyone know that offhand?
Twenty.
Twenty. Okay. So an annuity of 20. So, boy, I I think some taxpayers in the city of Waterbury would die to get $1,000 a day or $1,000 a week. That's a tremendous amount of money. Wow, that really, snowball really rolled down the hill. And the new superintendent is going to be looking for even more than that. So when we look at the $1,000 a day that we're paying until February, and we looks at look at X amount of dollars that we're going to pay the interim superintendent, we're looking at a tremendous amount of money. And just as a footnote, currently, we have two principals working at Willby, paying X amount of dollars to the permanent one and the other one being kind of a tutor or a mentor to this particular individual. I could see, you know, two, three weeks, even a month. But how long is this going to go on? It seems like our Board of Education can spend money like it grows on trees. And we don't look at really a budget process because we have plenty of money in that alliance fund that we can pilfer out and move around to plug in holes in the budget. So I was looking, my third point is this, I was looking for someone within the Waterbury school system that might have an O93, that might be available to do this job. Someone that may be one of our ILDs that we might replace them with temporarily and move somebody up and give them some additional responsibility and a stipend, thus reducing the overall cost. So I have some concerns about the amount of money that we're spending here. And I think we need to look at this very, very carefully. I mean, the state is scratching their head, digging holes, wondering, having midnight meetings, trying to find millions, if not billions of dollars for their their our indebtedness at the state level. We don't even know how much money we're going to get on the ECS. It's probably going to be about the same, if not more, if the surrounding towns don't get their money. So I'm not terribly concerned about that ECS money, but I am concerned about the tremendous amount of money that we are spending. And I think there's an alternate way to resolve this problem. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. You know, I know I was quiet last week as Dr. Willette was leaving. And my mother called me and said, why were you quiet? Why didn't you say something? And I said, you know why? I said, because I'm concerned. And I was hearing the different comments, et cetera. And, you know, my travels going, you know, at the schools and looking at the kids and and wondering about the concern of this district since the announcement, the retirement announcement. And, you know, I my concern, as in all of our concerns, and I'm sure that I speak hopefully for everyone here, should be with the kids. All right? This, we are in transition. And we need to make sure that this transition is transparent to our kids. Now, I'd hoped that our former or our superintendent would be able to stay. In fact, I told my mom, I said, frankly disappointed that she was not able to stay. But we need to move forward. Waterbury should be the district not of the past, but of the future. Our kids are relying on us to be the district of the future. Change is inevitable. But change should be a good thing for our kids. So when we look at who we have in the interim, you know, I I have confidence in Mr. Henry. I think he'll he'll, you know, pull us through on an interim basis. But Commissioner Tom Vanstone, yeah, I have I have that concern about what do we do? What are we doing to get some permanency in this position as superintendent? But I think it's, right now, baby steps that we have to take. We have to get someone in to pick up the leadership here. There is a desperate need for leadership in this district right now. And we have to take care of that right now. So I am in support of Mr. Henry filling in that position, this position for us on an interim basis. And I hope that everyone will support that. And the reason why, yeah, there's all this other, you know, something regarding some things that have happened in the past, et cetera. But I'm satisfied with the response, the explanation that he gave. So I'm ready to move forward, not look back, but move forward. And I hope that we're, everybody here sitting at this table is the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. I I agree with you. We need to move fast. We need to, we need to go forward with this vote on Mr. Henry. I believe that, I know that he is an experienced superintendent, having filled in before and having served as a superintendent. And as an extra added bonus, he is an experienced chief operating officer, chief of staff, having filled in on that job before into various places. Thrown into the mix, we know also that he is not interested in applying to be the permanent superintendent. So that's not going to influence us one way or the other. He has pretty much said he would be a caretaker superintendent. So I think that with Mr. Henry in place, we are going to be holding our own. I don't see us moving forward too quickly with an interim deputy who's serving as superintendent. But in the end, I will be supporting this resolution because we know that starting tomorrow morning or Monday, someone's going to have to sign those checks. And we need to have someone with the authority to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor O'Leary.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to respond to a couple of the things that were brought up. As far as the search for the superintendent, an RFP has been issued. The closing date is October 26th. For the firm, they'll be working with the civil service to do the appropriate search for the permanent superintendent. So October 26th is the closing date. Hopefully, this board will vet the responses to the RFP and pick a search firm that you're comfortable with. And the search will be will begin immediately. I think it's good timing. More than likely, the superintendent that is selected will be probably working in another district. I think that when we select the search firm, they will go out and do their job and find, hopefully, a number of qualified candidates who are interested. I believe that January, February, and March will be the time that the work will be done, interviews will happen. And the timing seems right for, hopefully, we find that perfect individual to meet all of our needs by the end of this school year, which will be May or June. So I think we're on time. I think we're on a really good schedule, quite frankly. I explained to you all how it was that the name of Robert Henry was submitted, was received by me. I think that he is an extraordinary. I think that he is an extraordinary individual. He is highly recommended from the state NIAG people, and I believe clearly that he will be a very engaged leader of the district, and I think that the district needs an engaged leader. Now, right now, and I think that Mr. Henry will fill that need. When superintendent said that she was going to leave, you know, effective today, there wasn't a lot of time, there wasn't a lot of ability, but quite frankly, you know, this man was the most highly recommended individual to start with, and so that's how he's here. I hope that you like him. I do. And if you don't, then we don't need to make him the interim superintendent on February 1st, but I suspect that you will, because everyone else that I've spoken to, that he's worked for in the past, really likes him. So, you would be the first not to like him, but that's okay. We'll see what happens. As far as the pay, well, that's what superintendents make, Commissioner Therryell. If you want to get qualified candidates to apply for the position of superintendent, then you need to pay them. And I think the city has had a history of balking at paying department heads what they deserve, and if you want to hold on to a police chief, or a fire chief, or a public works director, or a superintendent, you need to pay. And you may not like the salary, and I may not like it much either, but I want to get a superintendent here that is willing to take on the challenges of a district with 19,000 children and all of the things that come along with that, and I think that the pay should be commensurate with the job. And quite frankly, the superintendent in Waterbury makes significantly less than the superintendent of Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, and you may not like that either, but that's the way it is. And we're not going to get qualified candidates if we're not willing to compensate them accordingly. And I don't think that we should be arguing over that, quite frankly, we will, I know it's going to come, but I think we need to keep one thing in mind, the students. And I think that if we need to pay someone, when we get to that superintendent selection process, we need to make sure that we want to get the best person that we possibly can for this district, and that is going to include more money, quite frankly. As far as looking at people within the district, Commissioner Therryell, these people, there are people in this district that have O-93s, the fact is, they may apply for the position. And I honestly think, and I'm hoping that you agree, I think that this district right now needs an outside set of eyes and ears on what's happening here. And I share all of your frustrations with test scores and all the things that go along with it, and I also share, to probably maybe a little bit more degree, budgetary concerns as things move forward, as I was much more involved in the budget process over the last two years than I chose, than I wanted to be. But, the fact is, we needed to examine the district very, very carefully on a budgetary issue. You know what the state of the state is, we all do, and this board sent along a budget with a $6.2 million increase this year over last, and quite frankly, I was very disappointed, not in you, any of you, but disappointed that that budget came across without any cuts whatsoever. And so, unfortunately, we thought that we had to do what needed to be done, and so we did, and they were difficult decisions, but they, I think, history will show that they were the right decisions. Next year won't be any easier. I don't believe that next year's funding levels will meet the needs of the district. I don't know that for sure, none of us do, but I can tell you, if you thought there were cuts this year, brace yourself for next year. And that's why I think it's so necessary to have an outside set of eyes and ears on what's happening within this district. And there seems a very strong unwillingness at times to make changes and to eliminate positions, and, you know, honestly, I think that we need to have more of an open mind for the next couple of years because I don't see any relief in sight in the budget situation. So, it is what it is. I hope I answered, if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do want to make sure that there is one thing that's perfectly clear, there has been some reference to some issues in Mr., things that had come up in Mr. Henry's background. He was very, very transparent about those issues from the very moment I met him. I did not feel it was appropriate at the time because of the nature of the situation and the fact that he had been completely exonerated of any and all wrongdoing, and I didn't think it was necessary to share those with you at the time of your informal meeting request because, quite honestly, I didn't want you to be prejudging this man. And quite frankly, I know I made the right decision because a couple of you did prejudge this man, and I thought that was pretty lousy, quite frankly, and I'm sad about that, but that's okay. All the other things make me sad as well, but mostly, when people prejudge individuals, that makes me very disappointed. Having said that, I do believe we're going to have a very, very professional man who will be here in this role, and we will continue our superintendent search, and I'm really hopeful that we find that dynamic person that we can all agree will be the best leader for the district sometime in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Hernandez?
How many firms answered the RFP?
It's still out.
It's still out? Okay. I thought you said that.
October 26th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I hope a lot.
I think for my, you know, having met with Mr. Henry, been in on a lot of the informal meetings, I'm very comfortable with him. I think that he brings a wealth of experience, and I really believe that he'll bring a set of eyes to help us move forward and identify areas of strength and areas where we need to really improve. But, I think all of us here, and I know that the board here is totally committed to the students of this district, and I think we all look forward to working with Mr. Henry to move the district forward, so. With that, welcome Commissioner Haywatt.
No, thank you. I've done my homework.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Therryell?
No.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Do we need an executive session? No, no, okay. All right. No further business on the calendar, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good timing, Commissioner Haywatt.